All right, we are at 5:30. And Annie, do we have everyone we need for our first item, the Supporting Remote Learners?
Yes, I believe so. Jen or Michelle, if Becky is here on a conference--
She is, she says Mr. Driver.
Ah, there you go. I can't find her. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, great. Well, welcome everyone to the February 1st. My word, it's February already. February 1st, 2021 Hadley School Committee Public School Meeting. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda for tonight?
No, I do not believe, although I'm not sure if I have on the agenda updates. So I neglect to put that on there, but there will be--
We'll add announcements and updates after the school committee were, or sorry, after action items before next meeting dates. And I think we also wanted to discuss the resolution for COVID-19 vaccinations and educators being prioritized. We brought that up at a prior meeting, so if we could add that as a presentation and discussion item as well.
Yes.
And that can go with maybe metrics and testing.
Everything.
All right, any other adjustments?
No, I don't believe so.
Great, okay. Let's open up with public comment then. For folks who are new to the process, please, you have a digital hand. Usually it's at the bottom of your screen or in your participants panel. And if you would raise that, then we can just call on you. I see there is one now. And we will adhere to public comment policy, allowing for three minutes for each comment. And just as a reminder for folks, it's an opportunity for us to hear from you about items that we will be discussing. But typically, public comment is not a Q and A or a discussion in itself. It is, again, as stated, an opportunity for us to hear from you, your comments on whatever item you wish to raise. All right, I will call first on Tony Fiden. And I will ask you to unmute.
Hi there, everyone. Thanks for hosting the meeting tonight. And I wanted to speak on an issue that was brought up at, I think it was on the 24th of January by Ms. Dowdman, who's discussing the Hadley Elementary School curriculum. And this was something that I was not familiar with, which is the cultural scorecard, culturally responsive curriculum scorecard. And that was, I'm sure it's something that you have discussed, and I don't get to see all of the meetings, so it was new to me. So I did some research on it, and I want to just put some points out there for your consideration. It was, as I said, I was not familiar with it, and I did go to the website and look into this and tried to go in with an open mind. But I did have some concerns with the way that it would be, with the scorecard itself. First of all, I think it's important that we stick with, when we're dealing with tools like this, that I think we we stick with evidence-based tools. And this one is not, in my mind, it's a new, it's a new scorecard that was developed in 2019 for New York City and for their specific for their specific needs, their school system. And it was developed for English Language Arts and and it's being instituted in New York right now. And the actual data on how it will perform is very limited. And really, it's not only limited for New York City, but it's not at all clear how that would apply to different districts and in this case, different different subjects when we're dealing with social studies that Ms. Dowd was talking about. So I think it's, when it's something that's going to have an impact on our curriculum, on our school system, I think it's, I don't know if we should just jump into a new tool that hasn't been really tested to see what the consequences of it might be. Secondly, and I know that my time's limited, so I'm speaking quickly. Secondly, the I have some issues with just the, just the structure of the scorecard itself. The, I found it, I just found it very troubling, the process of going through books and authors and scoring them based on their race, their perceived race, their perceived background, their ethnicity, even their sexuality. It's, it seems to me to be completely subjective and for people to be going through a book or curriculum materials and trying to make judgments based on that, based on what people look like. I think it's just, I don't think it's something that we should be doing. You wouldn't want anyone to be basically looking around a room and saying, oh, this is, I'm putting that person in a category based on what they look like or based on anything, anything subjective like that. So I think it's, there are some, I found that kind of troubling. It's a and this is a, as you look at the scorecard, it's, it's pretty serious. They go from anywhere from supporting diverse curriculum to culturally destructive. And that is based on, in many cases, on on race and perceived ethnicity, perceived, even perceived sexuality, which is, I don't know how that would, how that would all shake down. As I said, this is something completely new. And it's, as I was going through this, I said, I was thinking, it's just to me, it seems like the wrong approach altogether to be actually counting and checking boxes with, based on pictures and images and some of the stories. And you know, I have two girls in the school system. They're at Hopkins now, and we tried to, we've always tried to teach them that when you, when you meet someone, when you see someone, whether it's in the news or on TV, you don't make judgments. You don't, don't assume that you know anything about them based on what they look like or what they're, what they're wearing, and certainly not, not their skin color. And so this approach seems to be the complete opposite of what we've been trying to teach our girls. It's, it's making those kind of judgments. And in this case, there are consequences to those judgments because you're gonna, you're going to be either buying materials or not buying materials, going, taking your curriculum in one direction or another based on that, especially, and one of the, one of the most, one of the priorities of this is with authors and trying to get authors, authors of color, which is a worthy goal. But when you're, when you're talking about buying materials, just, I was thinking, what if I walked into Barnes and Noble and said, I like this book, but I want to know the, the race of the author? That would be kind of absurd to me. And in this case, we're actually doing that. We're saying, we're trying to make judgments on our purchases based on race without looking into, without knowing any of their experience, their, their, their achievements. And it just seems really the wrong approach to go. And it just, and it seems, it's wrong, and it's just saying it's in the name of diversity and inclusion. It's not going to, it's not going to make it right. And the consequences of it, as I said, are serious. If I, I was an English major in college and I can look back, and I'm a writer now, and I can look back on the on the, the text and the authors that I studied in college and say, would, how many of these would have been eliminated? And based on, based on this kind of a scorecard. And you know, maybe some of that would have been an improvement, but maybe not. Are we gonna, are we gonna not read Hemingway? Are we not read Flannery O'Connor? Or you know, you could go right down the list, that people who, their, their texts probably had, may not have scored highly in their, in their own personal background they had issues with. So you could end up losing a lot. And just a final point, when you're talking about these authors who may have had problems, but when I was in college a long time ago, you know, we were expected to think critically and to read critically and to look at these things, these issues, they're the biases of the authors. And it was not, we were not just going in and not expected to, you know, taking everything at face value. And our, our teachers were expected to foster those conversations and and talk about what those issues might be. And I know my time is limited, so I'll end there, but I really was, I really find it very problematic for those issues, that it's not, there's not enough evidence that this will work or what it will look like, that it's, it's wrong to, to make these kind of judgments that may be very subjective. And it's just a wrong approach that may actually end up hurting, you know, being counterproductive to our goals when you're talking about being very identity-based and making judgments based on group identities or race. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing your concerns to our attention. And I think, you know, being able to respond to that in the future, in terms of when we discuss more in the future about very specific initiatives, being able to fold your comments into that conversation about the scorecard tool itself. And some of the points that you raised, I do really appreciate you raising those in a, in a very clear fashion. I understood what you're asking us to look into and look towards a future discussion around that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do see one more public comment at this time, and that is Sarah Pegasus. I hope I said that right. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. My apologies if I mispronounced your name. Sarah.
Hello, it's Sarah Pegasus, but totally fine. No one gets--
Thank you.
So I wanted, I believe I saw metrics on the agenda for tonight, and I just wanted to say a few things. I was at the meeting Wednesday, or the discussion, sorry, Wednesday that Paul led, and one of the things that really stood out for me is the trust that the staff has in their safety of their work environment. And from being at the, I've been to many virtually school committee meetings, and it really, the message I got was teachers were just ready to get back to the classroom and not much more information. From hearing all but one of the teachers that spoke, they all had concerns about what they see, what they need, and how it all weighs on them. And I really hope that their concerns are addressed before you talk about changing the metrics or opening more. I mean, my heart went out to them. And if I had not already decided to keep my son at home, that would have solidified my decision to listen to a teacher. So I just wanted to say that. Again, my heart goes out to, to everyone, but especially people that are in a public work environment. So I just wanted to say that and wish them well. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for your comments. And we will be talking about the metrics tonight. And really, the outcomes of what I think was a very open and productive conversation with the Hadley Education Association, so the educators that are on the ground and administration. And so we look forward to talking through that tonight and the mutual agreement that we've come to and where our priorities are looking ahead. All right, any other public comment? If so, please raise your digital hand. Okay, seeing none, we will move forward with the next topic, first presentation and discussion item. So our first item is around supporting remote learners at Hadley Elementary School. And we have three presenters for that. I'll turn it over to Ms. Witoits. Are you leading this?
I'm gonna start us off.
Thanks.
We just wanted to speak to some work we've been doing, trying to kind of get some more out to remote learners. During school committee meetings, families and school committee members expressed a desire to ensure equity for remote students, and teachers at the elementary school expressed the same desire. Given that they had in-person students, and again, let me just preface this by saying I'm speaking to, when in-person students are also present. Given that they had in-person students between the hours of 8:30 and 1:00, teachers found it logistically difficult to provide instruction for both groups. They felt as though they needed more support in order to offer additional opportunities to remote learners. The school committee expressed their willingness to help be a part of the solution. So Mrs. Witoits and I reached out to colleagues and asked for volunteers to join a committee to explore ideas for providing additional support to remote learners. We discussed a number of possible and creative ideas and decided to put out a survey to teachers about what was needed at each grade level. And we're gonna just kind of go over the results of that survey.
So that committee surveyed all classroom teachers, as well as our special education teachers and our Title I and ELL teachers. We had 12 respondents to that survey. Out of the 12, approximately 75% indicated that they could use additional support for their remote learners during the time block of 8:30 to 1:00. So that's the time that they currently have for in-person learners as well. So they indicated support could be used for remote learners during 8:30 to 1:00. And we broke that down, the 8:30 to 1:00 time block to half-hour chunks. And there's a lot of overlap there. Anywhere between three, as few as three to as many as 10 teachers indicated that during a variety of half-hour chunks that they could use additional support for remote learners.
The second question we asked was about that afternoon piece, the, between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00, we asked teachers what kinds of supports they'd be looking for during that period of time. So one respondent indicated that they would need assistance between 1:00 and 1:30, 5:00 between 1:30 and 2:00, 5:00 between 2:00 and 2:30, and three respondents between 2:30 and 3:00. And about 50% of people said they would need additional help in the afternoons.
And the last thing that we asked of teachers was to provide us with ideas for what they were looking for to support those remote learners. And there was a range, it ranged from opportunities for socialization, to be meeting with peers and chatting, having some social opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise, as well as social emotional lessons. In school, we offer things like whole-body listening, second step and zones of regulation. So we would like to be able to provide that, particularly in the lower grades, to some of our learners. And academic support was needed as well. Some, we are finding some remote students having difficulty completing assignments or just being offered intervention or support for any, any ELA or math, math assignments.
So we then presented our findings, or looped Ms. Dowd in on the findings and the survey results.
Great. And I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen because we did some nice work around looking at schedules and the resources currently in the building. Let me go ahead and pull that up.
Ms. Dowd, I think your camera--
Oh. My camera's off. Okay. Not sure why my camera's off. I can see myself.
There you are. There you are.
Oh, good. Okay. Very nervous about getting hacked still, so I want to make sure that does not happen. I apologize. Trying to get my screen up. Here we go. Schedules. Can everybody see my schedule now?
No, it's not sharing your screen yet.
Okay. What about now?
Here we go.
There you go.
Yay, okay, great. It was up on my screen. I don't know what's happening over here. All right, so what we started with, it was wonderful to work in collaboration with Ms. Witoits and Ms. Jelena's and actually the entire staff. What I initially did was ask everybody to work with me around being very specific in their particular schedules. How many remote students, which now has shifted since we initially started this project, we've actually added more in-person students from two weeks prior to putting this information together. So we've been working on it over the weekend to make sure we have accurate numbers. But if you look at the first column, this shows the schedules of staff to support the remote learners in minutes per week, so Monday through Friday. As you can see, we have a range when we examined everybody's schedule and looked at direct student minutes for remote learners. You can see that remote learners receive approximately between 150 and 300 minutes with their classroom teacher. Now, this is the direct relation, direct instruction from their classroom teachers. And you can see the breakdown kindergarten through grade six. The second column here is, this highlights when students are both in-person and remote, getting live instruction from their teacher. This is much more successful at the upper grades, where students are more independent with being able to log on, log off, navigate their screens independently. So this speaks to the remote learners that are able to log on and see what's happening live in their classrooms. Things that have been very helpful in this have been document cams. We just purchased seven additional document cams, which we're hoping will be able to facilitate more opportunities for this kind of live instruction for students. So you can see the minutes that are happening between, for our in-person and remote, and also so our in-person and remote. That's from grades three to grade six. The next column is the number of remote learners. This again has changed in the past two weeks. Recently, we just got 100% of fourth graders back for in-person instruction. This will help navigate some and talk to additional staff for support. Since there are no more remote learners in grade four, how can we look at our current resources that were previously spent for our fourth grade students, since now we are at 100% in-person? Sorry. The next is our grade level support staff. So this speaks just to the grade level support per classroom, not per classroom, per grade level. You'll see in kindergarten, we have two ESPs in grade one. We have Mr. Catania. He's our PE teacher. Obviously, specials are remote this year, so we took the specials teachers and allocated them to grade levels for support. And so Coach Catania from 8:25 to 11:00 is in grade one. And then there is an additional ESP that works between the first grade classrooms. Each classroom does have one assigned ESP. This originally was really to focus on in-person overflow spaces. We currently are not using any overflow spaces, so those, those staff members are in classrooms to help with the remote learners, to help with supervision, to help the teachers alleviate some time in the classroom so that they can go and address the needs of the remote learners. In grade five, we have Ms. Brain, so she's been allocated to that grade level, same schedules, Mr. Catania from 8:25 to 11:00. And then in grade six, they have one ESP. If you look at the Title I support, this is identified for students at each grade level that are supported remotely. So there are students that are identified as needing Title I reading support. They work with Rebecca de Bartolomeo. And these are the minutes that are allocated per grade level in which she works with those students. You'll notice there's two zeros there. That just simply means that there are no students in that grade level that require remote Title I support services. And then our math support, that's Mr. Richards, and he's dual-suit certified in art and math. And so he, early on, had a schedule where he was supporting students that were struggling. And you can see that his minutes are very devoted to our remote learners. He also makes videos and puts things together for math instruction for teachers. Just for our reference, for the last page, I wanted you to be able to see how many in-person students we have. So again, in fourth grade, we have 32. Those are all of our currently fourth grade enrolled students. Our numbers are obviously a lot higher. We've, we've said that from the beginning, beginning that we've had a lot more in-person students. Our final numbers are 205 in-person students, and now we're down to 45. That was from 57 a week ago. I've also spoken to some families that kind of wanted to see how this week was going to roll out and are looking to add their children in-person. I did want to also highlight that this is not 100% of the staff. We do have remote support for students with IEP accommodations that's coordinated through Pam Haywood, Director of Student Services. This includes things like academic support, OT, PT, psychological speech services that are in accordance with the students' specific plans. That information is not in this current document. But there are students, there are students that receive specialized instruction in-person and remote. We also have one-to-one ESPs, and those students, those ESPs are not responsible for remote students, considering they work with students in the building. And their, their assignments are working one-on-one to support students. Some of the recommendations that I'm going to be making is to meet with preschool. That's a resource that we have recognized that perhaps can help teachers. Our preschool is, is small but mighty, and our support staff in preschool is willing to help out and work with classroom teachers around getting materials together, supporting teachers in their planning time, and basically doing anything. They're just a great group of people that have expressed that they will be working with us to facilitate supports for classroom teachers. I'm also going to be looking at grade four, considering we now have 100% of students at that grade level, working with Pam Haywood to create schedule for the new ESP. We did hire a new ESP. She started this week. And so she will be allocated to supporting some special education students. But also in grade three, we had an unexpected retirement that happened this year. And so we're, we're working to try to support that grade level. I'm also going to continue to adjust the schedule. And after all new schedule changes that are created, I'm going to share with the staff and make a determination if we need additional staff and post accordingly to need. And that's, that's what I have so far. I'm open for questions, or you can ask Ms. Jelena's questions or Michelle Witoits. I'm very grateful for HEA to be working with us to identify needs at the building and really support our teachers.
Thank you all for the information gathering and presentation. I did have one question and actually two, sorry. First one, looking at the survey results between the preferred time for additional support between 8:30 and 1:00, where you broke it out by time block. 10 people selected the 9 to 9:30 block, which was the one that kind of, everybody centered around that. I was curious if you had any takeaways around what's happening right at that time, if it's just getting started, if it's getting, you know, underway on, on the work for the day, what, if there's any commonality about what's happening during that time block that your takeaway in terms of what kind of support might be cross-grade helpful?
So typically, in, when it's in-person, teachers start a morning meeting anywhere between 8:30 and 9:00 with the safety and health procedures in place. This year, that's bumped back a little bit. So I think that that's why that's such a popular time block is 9 to 9:30, because really, you're setting up the child, you're setting up any student's day for success by meeting with them early, setting the day's expectations, making their routines and getting ready. And that's something that's been a great challenge when we're juggling both in-person and remote learners, that we don't get, the general feeling is that we aren't always able to get to the remote learners as early in the day as we would like to.
Got it. That, that helps me to understand kind of what's going on during that timeframe and juggling between folks that are in the classroom versus the remote learners that are not physically sitting there. Thank you. And then my follow-up--
So I, and I guess I could add, sorry, to add to it now. She talked about three through six doing both simultaneously, but particularly in the lower grades. It's easier for us to sort of settle in the in-person students first, prior to stepping away to work with the remote students. So hopefully that answered your question. But yeah, we're, I think we're really looking to get to the remote students earlier and set up their day as successfully as possible for them.
Got it. And yeah, I think I was approaching it more of a, if there's a shared approach-- And yeah, I think I was approaching it more of a, if there's a shared approach, you know, if there's a common bottleneck area that you see as this is the timeframe that we just want to solve, whether that's, you know, somebody who's dedicated to the, I'm going to help offset that timeframe by, you know, but it sounds like it's a lot of one-on-one work at that time in terms of getting people started, getting kids started. And we're, you know, I look forward to hearing the ideas and additional, you know, creative solutions that come out of the work that you and the committee are doing. And I think my follow-up question was really, is there anything at this at this point in the process that you've identified where we can be of help? We being the school committee members in front of you that we can help with in supporting. And you can hold on that if you'd like until I know others have some questions and comments. But I'd love to hear if there are specific needs that we can help investigate or support in any way.
I just want to build on what Heather commented. She said, it sounds like it's a lot of one-on-one setting up each individual child for success. But I I actually wonder if it's the the teacher and their four remote learners or the teacher and their however many remote learners as a group to say, this is what I'm asking you to do for the day. Do you, can I answer any questions? You're building on this work. Oh, you already did it, no problem. But it's a group thing, not necessarily one-on-one triaging. Is that, do I, am I, do I have it wrong, Michelle? Or is that true that it's small group?
I think it's more grade, I would, I would say more grade level. I think for a classroom teacher, ideally, a classroom teacher would like to be able to check in and meet with their remote learners, which would be a small group right now, most grades, if you're looking at it, and and get their day started.
Right.
And I found that too, Humira, that it's really grade-specific. And so it's it's unique to the grade level. It's unique to the remote learner's need of support. And so, you know, each child is very different in in the way that they learn, the way that they need support. And so that's one of the challenging things for our staff, because we're, we are so committed to making sure that every student's set up for success. And that often happens, especially at the younger grades in the morning. The kids are ready to go. And so it's, it's just, it's wanting to make sure that we do justice and meet the needs of all of our learners at the optimal times. You know, a five-year-old looks very different at, you know, two 50 than, you know, at nine 50. So that's why we just, just to answer your question.
I'll say I look very different at two 50 versus nine 50 after being on Zoom all day.
We all do, we all do. Yes, that's true. That's true. Good point, Paul.
You worse than most. But so the, I guess the question is, you did this great analysis, and thank you for that, based on sort of a zero-sum game, meaning you've got what you have and and, but, you know, getting back to Heather's point. And this is a question, I guess, for Annie too, you know, with some of the federal funding that's coming our way. Does that provide us more options if Jen and her folks come back and say, you know, we really can't meet the need that's been expressed just with the resources we have? We need additional resources. Are those an option?
Yes. So just to underscore the primary purpose, and thank you very, very much, Ms. Dowd, Ms. Watoits, Ms. Jelena's. I know how much work went into just getting into the details and thinking through what people need, how we're currently allocating resources, and how we might allocate resources differently, maybe, and or increase the amount of resources we have. So the purpose of this, and this will make a lot of sense when we get to the end on a budget update recommendation that I have, is just that these folks have done a great job of demonstrating due diligence, which is a very important priority in the town. So absolutely, the recommendation is that we need additional staff or whatever it is, additional or different technology. We do have federal funds that can help with that. We do have school choice funds that can help with that. We just want to demonstrate the town at all times that we think deeply and critically before we make a recommendation or act. And thank you all. You did a phenomenal job of that. I appreciate it. And Jen, you can stop sharing your screen if you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to build on what Annie just said. I I really appreciate the fact that you took to heart our urging to be creative. And this clearly demonstrates to me the the that you did that. And I can see some out-of-the-box solutions potentially being applied. So I look forward to seeing that come to life. Thank you.
And just so that you are aware, and any remote families that are on this call, I will be hosting a remote family Zoom session for next week, because I want to hear also, not just from our staff of what we need, but from the families directly. And so I will be putting together a survey for them, but I always, I I just, I think I get a lot more from a conversation. And so I would like to meet with those remote families, invite them in to speak with me, to share their concerns, their feedback, and then share that information with the staff as well. So I'll be scheduling that for next week.
And Jen, you you had the numbers of the students that are going to be in. We haven't been in in person since before Christmas, so is this done via a survey?
Yeah, we put a survey together. We surveyed the staff, not the staff, I'm sorry, we remote, we surveyed the remote families last Wednesday. And then we found out Thursday that we were coming back in person. So we, everybody responded, which was wonderful. And I did have some people responding that they would like to hold off until this week was was passed. And so those numbers will continue to shift. We'll continue, that graph also shows 100% of staff in. One of the challenges that I am faced with is is when people get sick, when we need support in different grade levels. It's one of the years that we just have to be flexible and almost work week to week to make sure that we have everything up and running. But I do anticipate that those numbers will shift. But yes, it's it's current information. Up until this morning, we were working on it, just, and and I can't thank my administrative staff enough because they have made phone calls to get accurate numbers, to make sure that when teachers come back, they know exactly who's going to be in front of them and ready to go.
I just want to say thank you real quick to Michelle and Becky and Jen for coordinating all this. But really, when I look at, when I look at the schedule and availability, and what runs through my head is just appreciation for all staff at HEA, at HES. And I I know I can extend that to the high school as well, because I feel like all of you have really rolled up your sleeves and said, what can we do? How can we help? How can we make the schedule better? You're all working just amazingly together and really just focusing on how can we make the days of the students, both remote and in-person, when they're in-person, better? And I just, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your dedication and your professionalism to these kids and to the school as a whole. So just thank you again. And I don't think we can say our appreciation enough right now in this time, because it's tiring and it's trying, and you all are still coming on this Zoom with a smile. So thank you all.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We appreciate your support, and we look forward to the possibility of giving more to those remote learners during that time.
Great, thanks so much. And we look forward to, you know, hearing more on this and hearing about what else, what other creative solutions or what needs may arise. Anything else on this topic? All right, well, thank you all. Appreciate it very much. And I'm sure we will be hearing more about it in the future. So thank you. Next, we have the review of public health data.
I am going to share my screen, although Heather, I'm going to ask that I can just make this one announcement out of order, because it is really stressing me out, simply because I will not get the School Brains notification until later. So we, the district will be closed entirely tomorrow. But it's going to be weather, that's weather-related, and I can go through all the reasons to justify that. But some people will be frustrated and some people won't. Just know there will be no remote instruction, there will be no in-person instruction tomorrow. And I will be sending out something on School Brains, and I will send out a phone call, assuming school committee ends at a reasonable hour. And that will come out tonight, but I just wanted people to hear that. I certainly wanted the staff on this, at this meeting to hear that as well. If you have other questions about the building or looking at access, you can email your building principal. Okay, so now I'm going to share my screen on the health data. And these are our data from most recently, last Wednesday. So we can see that the average daily incidence rate did go down in Hampshire County. That's column D, and testing positivity fell below 3%, which is why this week would be an in-person week. They're judging from my weather calls. You're probably, all of you are saying, well, you didn't do a great job of that. But I did not call for the storm, I can assure you. I just thank you, HES, for giving me these data. I just updated the HES in-person and remote, and I will do the same for Hopkins Academy when I've spoken with their front office. And sadly and unfortunately, I did notify families today that we've had another staff member test positive for COVID-19. We notified the close contacts. We didn't have any student close contacts because students have been remote. We do hope that the staff member certainly does not get seriously ill, feels better quickly. We're thinking of the staff member. And again, with some, that's, and, um, yeah, that's all of our data from last week. I don't know if the school committee has any questions or just wanted to have any discussion about that. And I can also, well, actually, perhaps if you don't mind, I will. Hold on. I will. Sorry, I want to put up a different screen. Calling that up, Annie, I just want to make a note that, based on our last conversation, one thing that really stuck out to me is that these are, these numbers are from those who report that their children have COVID. And so we don't always know, there's, there's nothing that legally requires anyone to report. We, it is the ethical thing to do. We implore people to, and we strongly urge the community to report when there are known instances of COVID. But this is a minimum number. In fact, an article that I read that included Fauci's comments about the current numbers. He said, okay, well, we know it's this, I think it was in his recent New York Times interview. So we can truly expect that it's four times that, which was startling to me nationally, nationally. And I'm not saying that it's four times this in Hadley, but I just want to make sure people realize this is what is reported. I'm really grateful that you said that, Humira. I always like to remind families, please, even when children are remote, even if you're planning to keep your child remote all year. It's very helpful to us when we know, when there are cases involving anyone in our school community, any learner or any faculty or staff member. And also, sometimes particularly, this is certainly more true at Hopkins Academy. It could be that a student came in for materials pickup, which is really beneficial and helpful to us to know exactly who is tested positive, so we can make sure that we have done thorough contact tracing. The other document that's related to the data that we looked at is part of the summary from the conversation that Heather, you referenced between the HES and the school committee. This is what went out to the staff, but I thought it might be helpful to just read to the community as well. So this committee and representatives from Labor meant to review our district metrics for in-person learning in light of updated recommendations from public health experts. The path to zero faculty and staff feedback, community feedback, and emerging information on new strains of the COVID-19 virus. Labor and management agree that the district should continue to follow its existing metrics for in-person learning. Those existing metrics are no evidence of school transmission. The testing positivity in Hampshire County would need to be below 3% or the average daily incidence rate in Hampshire County below 25 per 100,000. Labor and management discussed how the district might implement a surveillance testing program that would enhance our infection control strategies. Representatives from the school committee will work with the superintendent and seek input from faculty, staff, and families to develop surveillance testing plans for the district. Some people have asked me surveillance testing. I had one great email from somebody who said, I was raised in the 60s. That sounds a little frightening. It just means testing asymptomatic individuals to see if anybody is positive. Also, let me move this over so I can scroll down. Labor and management, and this part is perhaps the most important part for me. Labor and management underscore the values that have and will continue to inform our decision-making. All stakeholder groups, faculty, staff, parents, students, administration, and school committee have a shared goal. And that is to increase in-person learning opportunities in a way that is responsible, reasonable, prioritizes health and safety, and that is informed by science and data. Please know that remote learning will always remain an option this year. But this is about increasing in-person learning opportunities for those families who would prefer those opportunities. None of these groups are adversaries. We are not adversaries. We must remember that we are not fighting each other. Achieving our goal requires critical thinking, complex problem-solving, people listening, and the ability to understand perspectives that differ from ours, and compassion. We are all committed to regularly reviewing our plans and practices to ensure that we are integrating recommendations and feedback, that we're balancing the needs of multiple stakeholders, and that we are doing all we can to support and respect each other as we continue to navigate a challenging, overwhelming, and often frustrating time. We are all trying our best to balance our individual and collective needs and to do our part to get through this experience, and we will. So simply for weather reasons, a bunch of children who were probably thrilled about coming back to school are now having that delayed. But I also want you to know that I understand how badly some children, some children and families would like to see more in-person learning opportunities. I understand that there are parents and there are faculty who are deeply concerned and sometimes even afraid that the toll that remote learning may have on some children is just devastating. And I also know that every time I make a phone call for contact tracing, whether it's to a parent or a faculty, those responses range from a sharp intake of breath. Sometimes people burst into tears. Sometimes they are just silent. It's terrifying, because they don't know if they get sick, how sick they might get, if they'll infect somebody else. I say all that simply to underscore the fact that none of this is easy, and adhering to these values is absolutely paramount. We are not at war with one another about which way we should be going. We're trying to sort out something that is very difficult. Long story short, the metrics are not changing, and I can go back to the data. If school committee would like that up, you can tell me what screen you'd like or need or none is fine.
Thanks, Annie, for pulling up that communication, because I think that that captured, you know, the the nature of the conversation. It was a great conversation that we had with HEA and all of us. And I think that, you know, I felt like we left that conversation with a clear direction on where our focus and our energies would be, would be shift, not shifting towards, it's not the right word, but more focused on as we move ahead. I think we acknowledged the changing landscape. We acknowledged the unknowns, but we also acknowledged some of the positives that are coming, which kind of leads us into the added topic around the resolution, which is, you know, the positive that is coming is this, this vaccine. We acknowledge that it's not the, you know, it's not the instant, everything's back to normal. But it is a hopeful step and a tool that we discussed that we will have available to us soon. We also acknowledge testing as being another tool that is our efforts focusing on testing, vaccination supports, and other health and safety measures in order to really focus on those things rather than just talking about numbers, which, not that we've only been talking about numbers, but I think that we wanted to talk about the whole picture. but I think that we wanted to talk about the whole picture and all of those pieces. So I appreciate you bringing up the communication and I think a lot of work has been done and will continue to be done on the testing front. And where we can, you know, put our voice right out there with the superintendents and others about our support of prioritization of vaccinations. I think we want to do that. We've committed to, you know, saying that we're committed to doing that and supporting that. And hopefully it'll get some traction, you know, who knows? But I think that that's, that's the, at least some outcomes that we can focus on in the immediate future.
Maybe if I could just chime in, Heather, and just reiterate, yeah, thank you. I thought that was a really helpful conversation we had last Thursday. I also say thanks. There's about 70 some odd families and or individuals that joined for the listening session that we had last week on Wednesday. Really great conversation, a lot of heartfelt and good thinking on, on all sides. I learned several things actually, which my intent was really just to hear different perspectives. We talked about this document, the path to zero, but we also talked about other elements. And a lot of it was really just people sharing their individual experiences, which was very enlightening for me. It was, it was a good forum for us to hear from the teachers too. So that was a good precedent before the Thursday conversation with the H E A representatives. I will say too, today I talked to folks at the Broad Institute, which is in Cambridge, right? They're doing some of the testing for UMass. They're doing the testing for Williston. Ethan, thanks for helping me with that contact. They passed me on to the C I C testing group. I'm meeting with them tomorrow to get pricing on diagnostic testing. And Annie, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the pool testing that's being offered by the state is through C I C testing. There's the contractors, if I got that right. Is that correct?
There are actually three contractors, but Broad Institute is, that's who the state is working with.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the goal would be, I think we haven't, Annie, right? We're still contemplating as a school whether we're going to use that pool testing from the state. There's pros and cons to it. As you mentioned last week, several school districts in our region have declined it. So obviously there's some cons that they, they've, they've thought outweighed the benefits. We're talking about that. We're also talking about, well, what would it look like if we did further diagnostic testing? Say of some subset of our team, whether it's all the faculty, whether it's just the high school students or what have you. In addition to things with full testing or in place of full testing. So I think all options are really on the table. What we're trying to do is I'm trying to gather more information. Not heard back from UMass and I've kind of hit my point where if I call them again, I'm just going to be really annoying, which so if anybody else has contacts there, I know they're swamped with the students back. So it's, I'm not being critical of them. They've been very kind. I've called the, you know, several other folks, other places region, locally that do testing and, and it just hasn't been able to get traction. So I'm hoping the C I C through the Broad Institutes are our way forward of getting an option of what diagnostic testing. So, you know, that's the more refined test, the more precise test, the P C R test that, you know, UMass is doing bi-weekly. We could potentially do weekly, something like that. Annie, anything to add on testing?
No, I don't have anything to add at this point. Thank you, Paul, for all of your assistance. I know, Terry, you've also offered to help with this. And as I mentioned, Paul, my goal for tomorrow is to get what we know kind of into one document. What would each option do? Why might we pursue it? And how we would move forward, meaning just having our precondition checklist for any strategy in one place. By a precondition checklist, I mean, for example, if we need certain certifications for the state, which we do before we do school testing, what are those and where are they? So that's my priority for, for starting tomorrow morning.
I will say, you know, one of the insights I received from last week was, you know, while we have, I think, document path to zero saying schools should be open. You've got, you've got the CDC coming out with their guidelines last week that said schools can reopen safely. There was an article by the top pediatric doctors at Bay State saying advocating schools should be open. Those are documents of scientists on studies, you know, the CDC is based on a study of 17 schools in rural Wisconsin that showed that the rates of transmission within the schools was lower than the rates of transmission within the county. That doesn't seem to resonate with everybody because I don't think that those studies can really exactly mirror people's experiences. And those experiences matter, right? So how do, how do I as an individual experience being a teacher? Or how do I as an individual experience being a parent within an area where some of my neighbors might not be following this COVID protocols like I follow? And therefore there's concern that arises from that. Those are all things we heard last week. So while I think these data personally are compelling, I'm not in that situation where I'm a teacher. I'm not in that situation where I share some of those same concerns as some other parents. So that for me was really sort of pushing me to try to understand everybody in their own situation. So how do we, if, are there ways to address some of those concerns? And I think testing is one. It's not going to address every concern. It's not going to solve all the problems, but maybe it is a way to give, to help us feel more comfortable that we can shift maybe from phase two to phase three. Vaccination clearly is another one, but vaccinations are something that I think while the resolution is helpful, when I listen to the governor every day, he's pushing as hard as he can anyway. So, you know, resolution doesn't hurt. But, you know, vaccinations are somewhat out of his hands. So all that to say, I'm trying to tackle each, each opportunity, each challenge as I see fit. And I think testing is sort of the, rather than focus on the metrics that we have in place and talking about how best to refine those, if at all. And I'm not saying they need revision, rather focus on the future. Like you said, Heather, what's, what's the next opportunity or challenge that we have? And I think testing helps address that.
Thanks, Paul. And I think the thing that struck me too, both in the conversation that you hosted, as well as the, the papers that have come out, including path to zero, is that while the, the outcome may be, and we all want that same shared outcome of, you know, as much, you know, in-person, back to school, in-person instruction as possible, it comes with the caveat of the other, it's not in isolation, right? There are other aspects of that plan that are brought out in those papers in terms of some of the components you identified. Community, you know, components in terms of what are some of the responsibilities of, of others outside of the schools? And I, I appreciate seeing that as a whole picture because our schools are, are so much a part of the community and the bigger town. So I liked, one of the things I really valued about the session that you hosted was hearing from what I felt like was a very representative cross-section of different stakeholders within our town and our schools. And I appreciated being able to hear that in a very open and respectful forum. So I thank you for providing that opportunity in the structure that you did. And I think we have still, you know, a number of participants on this meeting tonight that may have been in that listening session. And I thank folks for their open and honest sharing, especially in your sticky notes exercise that you did of reasons why you could support a plan and things that are the challenges. What are the things that would keep you from supporting a plan? And just the way that that was structured, I do appreciate it. It helps give all of us, I think, some insight.
Thanks, Heather. I agree. I think it was a wonderful conversation and I really appreciated everybody's earnest and open and kind conversation. It was great.
All right. So it sounds like metrics and testing. So we're not burying the lead. We're, we're keeping the metrics that we have currently, but focusing on the tools that we will have or testing. What can we get and supporting prioritization of vaccination? Really appreciated seeing some of the survey results from H E A around. Because we said, can we just take the pulse of would, would our teachers get a vaccination if it was offered? What, do our teachers plan to get it? Do our teachers, would they participate in testing? All of those things helped us, right? In these discussions around, we're all in this together. And, and so I thank you for that. Humira, let me ask you, would you like to talk a little bit about the resolution?
I would. Thank you. Just picking up where you left off. One thing about testing that I want to make sure that we are keeping in mind is that, you know, the, the scientists and, and, you know, all the way up as high as Fauci and global scientists have said contact tracing, testing and vaccination, these are the things, you know, and all the hand washing and masking, the mitigation strategies. Testing, testing is, there's lots of different kinds of testing. Lots of different kinds of testing and lots of different strategies for how to execute on those tests. Back in the fall, we were one of the early ones that recognized that testing would be, could be game changing. If we could bring on board a testing strategy, that could help really prevent us from flying blind and allow us a lot more certainty in detecting early and nipping that in the bud. And so we benchmarked a resolution that was in a handful of districts. And we made it our own. We passed it and we be, it ended up being a resolution that a lot of districts adopted. And I believe there is a direct correlation between that level of overwhelming support and action that takes place at the state level. So I, I do believe in the power of these resolutions. And I, like you, was very pleased to see the data from H E A about educators' willingness to participate in both testing and vaccination as soon as it's available. In fact, I was really surprised at how much, how overwhelming the level of support was. And so if we are really sort of pursuing multiple paths, then it's important for us to also look at a, a resolution in support of vaccination for K-12 educators in the state. And this is a, something that another district had inquired about. And so I thought that something like this already existed in the state, but it's still early days. And evidently there isn't one that I found that another district has led. That said, I, as you know, I work at Stanford in California. I have a lot of colleagues at the, who work with the Berkeley Unified School District. And I was able to find and leverage a resolution in support of vaccination that is appropriate for Hadley and our state. I shared it with you all colleagues. It is a little bit on the long side, but the essence of it is whereas we are following the mitigation strategies and doing the widespread masking and, you know, doing the testing and tracing, or trying to adopt testing and tracing, vaccines are proven to be the most effective strategy. And therefore we need to prioritize educators alongside, you know, after our frontline health workers and elderly in care settings, but equally like alongside other essential and frontline workers. And so I do believe that such a resolution would gain traction across the state. And, you know, it's interesting because we all met in executive session on Monday. And I remember saying, we have to pass a vaccine resolution. We just, we have to pass a vaccine resolution. I remember someone saying, but the, you know, governor's already stated that it's, it's phase two. And I remember making the remark that, well, anything can change. I mean, this is a moving target, right? Anything can change. And sure enough, that same day, unbeknownst to us, the population of 65 and older was permitted before phase two. Now, look, I think that everyone should get vaccinated. I really do. And, and I don't think we should sit on 3% of vaccines for second doses. I think we should, you know, get with it and start injecting and wait for another just-in-time delivery to do those second, the second inoculations. So anything can change and anyone can go further, higher or lower down the pecking order. And for that reason, I think it's absolutely essential that we pass this resolution and share it broadly across the state because I think something like this can really help ensure that our educators who, you know, who are in contact and willing and ready can get back to school with the assuredness needed to operate safely. I think we owe that to our educators. So I would like to put forth that we, we voted, we, we vote to approve this resolution.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it. I think it, it lays out, you know, the importance, the background, the ripple effects, the impact. And it describes, you know, that while the current plan is that teachers are prioritized in group two, I believe is the correct grouping right now of phase two, for which group one just started today, technically, that you're saying, you know, include them as top priority following healthcare workers and long-term care residents for access as soon as it's available. You know, that's, I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah, this is Paul. I think that makes sense. And thanks for putting that together, Humira. I just wanted to, everybody okay with all that language? There's some strong language in there. And I think it's second page. So I just wanted to make sure everybody in that school committee is comfortable. It's, you know, the full extent of the ripple effects are unknown, but undoubtedly significant and tragic. Do we want to say it that strongly? Inability to safely open schools has threatened the long-term educational outcomes for many students, mental and physical health of many students. I just, maybe there's some different language that gets that same message. Other than that, I really appreciate that. I agree with the intent totally.
Is this something, just thinking, Annie, about protocol? Can we, can we send in any requests for revisions to Humira on an individual basis? If we need, because I mean, full disclosure, I think we all just saw this starting today. There's language from your superintendent's letter that maybe that might help if that wasn't pulled in already, Humira, we could pull in. But then would we, we would need to be in an open meeting to vote to approve it, to send it out? Is that correct?
So if you, here's what you could do. So you're correct that if individual people provide feedback to Humira, as long as you don't do that collectively electronically or via Zoom, you provide Humira with individual feedback, you could say that you've kind of, Humira would integrate that feedback into a revised resolution and, and proceed that way. Or, and I would check with school committee council to make sure that you could. And if school committee council said you couldn't, then we bring it back on the 22nd.
I mean, every day, every week is just, it's going to affect the strategy that is employed. So if we want to apply delays because of language, we can. If there's a specific word that you would feel if stricken would be just as appropriate, I'm all ears. But I do feel as though this is, you know, it's, it's just going to, if we bring this back at the end of February, sure. I mean, by then perhaps other groupings will be elevated or get higher in the priority. And certainly you won't have the other school districts around the state taking action in coordination. But I'm, I'm open to adjusting language right now. If we feel that something is truly.
Paul, did you have any suggestions?
Yeah, truly.
I could live with that. I, to be honest, I was, how do I say this diplomatically? I've been an advocate to, I think we can safely open the schools. And not everybody agrees with that position. I just don't want to say that those people who don't agree with that position are causing a significant and tragic occurrence, right? And so that's what I worry about setting up. But if you all are comfortable with it, that's fine. We just say, there's a risk of those words getting turned back upon us. That's my caution, but.
So I can strike that part out. The full extent of the ripple effects of an inability to safely open schools are unknown. Period.
Or, or potentially just change undoubtedly to potentially. Or, or potentially just change undoubtedly to potentially-
Or pretend, yeah, and, but, but potentially significant. And we could remove "and tragic." Do we want to remove "and tragic"? As such, are we good to go with this?
I think, I understand Paul's position on this and I, I agree. I think trying to remove some of the emotion aspect of this and more talk about the facts, right? You've, the, we've laid out a lot of the facts around the background on this. You know, how to, widespread mask wearing, all contact tracing, vaccines are effective steps. But then we turn it to, okay, we don't, I don't think we necessarily need to say tragic.
Yeah, and, and it's now removed.
Personally, I think you could end that paragraph after suffer as well. I don't think, I think as Heather said, the rest of it is, could be seen as judgmental and finger pointing and, you know, what we heard in the listening session or other perspectives that might feel criticized by that.
Yes. Okay, so when our children, schools cannot open, children suffer, maybe too extreme. So there are consequences.
Yeah.
So we could, I could strike this, which is highlighted. Everything from when to well. As such, I'm okay with that. Okay.
Do we want to stay with threatened?
You could, you could make it less intentional and say could threaten? We, we don't know, or remove it?
Or challenged?
Could, yeah.
Could compromise or could challenge?
Yeah, they'll expect her.
I like that compromise.
Okay.
Most vulnerable, mental, physical, how, lives and livelihood. Those, those are all facts, right? Those are all outcomes that we've talked about. Full extent are unknown, but potentially significant. That's true.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, Paul. Thank you for pointing that out.
I think it's just that paragraph that seemed, like you said, a little bit. The language is, could potentially be inflammatory, but the rest of this was great. Thanks, HUMIRA, for bringing it forward.
You're welcome. Okay, so should I make them, Ethan, did you have a comment?
No, go ahead.
Should I make a motion to approve this or is there?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I'll get it signed and I'll work with Annie and folks to get it distributed.
Thank you very much. And I will share it with other districts in case they would like to consider something like this. I think the faster we all move in concert, the, the more, more likely it is that we will prioritize educators.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, draft calendar, we ready to talk about next year?
I am, and I'm not going to screen share because I don't want to confuse people. This is the draft no vote calendar, just a few heads up, a few heads up because we are still working out the details. We will probably look to have staff return on August 27th. That is a Friday. Contractually, teachers and other unit A members, specialists, their school year doesn't start before August 26th. Or we've understood that to be, it's August 26th would be the, August 27th would be the early date that they would return. So August 27th, educators potentially at this point would return. And that would put students back in probably Tuesday, August 31st. And right now, what we're looking at is if we count out then the 180 days for student learning that's required, include the required professional development days, we would probably have all students ending June 17th, Friday. That assumes absolutely no snow, five snow days brings it out to the following Friday. And graduation back to the first Friday in June. It's typically, it was just the third in 2022. It used to always be the first Friday in June. If you folks remember, it wasn't until recently, just these last two years. It's been the Friday of Memorial Day weekend. And that has had to do with, it's how the calendar has fallen. And when seniors are allowed to end their school year, that's stipulated in the law. There's, it can't be, it can't be any earlier than 12 days, earlier than the scheduled end date for the remaining students. Some things we're looking at are, is there a way to allow for additional meaningful professional development and planning time within the calendar? And provide interesting, what we would call deep learning opportunities for students. So we're talking about, are there ways to maybe bring different organizations into the schools that might provide students with instruction in the performing arts? Or we could have speakers. We could also look to some of, some community organizations and see if they might be interested in coming in and providing opportunities for students. So this is still a work in progress and we'll have more information on the 22nd. But I do know that some families are, do wonder. And of course, all of this assumes that we're making steady progress with COVID-19 in terms of vaccinations. We're well on path to just kind of kicking off a, a normal school year. I certainly hope and anticipate that that would be the case. And so if families are wondering now, gosh, what should I be thinking? Be thinking around Tuesday, August 31st as the return date, somewhere in that neighborhood for students. And again, staff, no earlier than the 27th of August. And be continued.
Yeah, Annie, my only feedback on this is in some of the past discussions around graduation, it was to, you know, try to get seniors completed within the month of May for other commitments that they may have, jobs, whatever the next step, you know, beyond high school is. And so, I mean, I'm not seeing where that's entirely possible here unless you're starting earlier. But I also, I'm assuming that you're applying the same, the, the traditional number of days that we need to have in person.
That's the trick, Heather, is that, so there's, there's 180 days that are required. Those are the time on learning requirements for all students. And there's a specific law that indicates the earliest that 12th grade students can have their last day. And it has to fall within so many days from the scheduled last day for other students. Otherwise, it's actually a violation of the law. It's part of the reason I wanted to bring this up. I don't want families having it planted in their head. Oh, it's Memorial Day weekend, it's graduation. It is highly unlikely, I will say now, impossible that that's going to happen next year. When you look at time on learning and contracts, right? So contracts stipulate staff return dates. And they're all reasonable, you know, there are reasons for them. Nobody is creating problems or getting in the way. These are laws and contracts that, that exist for a reason.
And then my only other question was, have, I mean, I'm assuming that there hasn't been any talk yet among either superintendent's groups or from the state around having that extra time at the beginning of the year, like was afforded this year in terms of personnel planning time?
I can't imagine that that would happen, but again, anything can happen. The commissioner, actually the Board of Education had to, had to kind of, what's the word? I want to suspend the time on learning requirements for this year. So students only, those additional 10 days for teachers meant that students had 170 days of instruction. And that suspension of, it wasn't, the law wasn't amended. The expectation was suspended. And so I, I don't foresee that happening, but I think HUMIRA is right. In this world, everything changes all the time. So I guess my answer would, may be worth nothing in a month, but I don't foresee that happening.
Not worth nothing. We'll just revisit it if we need to.
That's it for the calendar, yeah.
All right, we, this isn't an action item for us, just a FYI. Okay.
Hey, Annie, just, just interrupt real quick. Is there any thought or talk of summer school this summer?
So certainly there is. Right now at Hopkins Academy, there have been efforts to organize opportunities for supplemental instruction over various breaks. I know that for students, that some of those options that have already been provided were not met with huge enthusiasm. And I can say that I understand that the idea of going to school over break doesn't sound all that thrilling. We are actively working on what supports will be available in the summer. And yeah, so we always have additional, what's called extended school year for those students to qualify under special education. But in addition to that, we have funding that will allow us to provide academic tutoring and support and other things for all students, if that is something that they need.
Excellent.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is the formative evaluation of superintendent.
Yes, so I don't think I need to screen share on that either. That was just my report to all of you. And again, I'll reiterate, the law has changed slightly in the past. At my formative evaluation, you effectively had to kind of vote and come to consensus on what ranking, like progress ranking that you would like to assign to me. All that's required at this point is, this is an opportunity for you to give me feedback. If there are any glaring deficiencies with my performance that you would like corrected before year's end, it's important that those are stated now. Or if you say that you need an additional meeting to address that, we can do that as well. So really, it's just an opportunity for any feedback regarding adjustments that you'd like to see, the goals that I and the district are currently working on. Like to see our attention shift elsewhere. That would be helpful to know if there's any performance deficiencies you'd like addressed. That's all you need to do at this point. And the summative comes at the end of the year. And if there's nothing, that's okay. I just, upon recently looking at the strategy documents, I was surprised that we were present enough in light of how volatile and changing our monthly environment is, that we had the presence in, of mind to add some critical new things and shift our priorities. And I, I think you've done a great job of helping manage that orientation towards a COVID environment and managing new schedules and mitigation strategies. And I think you're doing a pretty remarkable job. I don't know what we would do if we did not have you in place in this role. And I feel very lucky. So no, no changes on my part.
Yeah, I would agree. I think you've been, you know, very responsive where we've brought new things to your attention or new initiatives. I think you've brought things to us. When you look at the successful, you know, grants and opportunities that you have pursued with, with the support of your staff or have, you know, tapped them as being a lead in pursuing those things. I think they follow your model that you laid out for them and it's been very successful. I think that continuing to be open with, with us and helping to be sure that we are grounded in what is, I guess, really the current feelings of the staff, of the administration, of just the, the lay of the land. You know, I, I appreciate that because, you know, in this environment, I mean, we're not stopping by. We're not, you know, none of us, I don't think, are really walking the halls and saying hello and seeing, you know, everybody there. And so this is really an opportunity for us to connect with teachers, administration, you. So much appreciated that you're willing to be open with us about, here's what's, you know, here's what's going on. Here's what we, you know, what you would recommend. And I also appreciate you listening when we surface ideas or offers or opportunities that it's, it, you take it in good faith and you don't take it as, you know, any kind of, you know, indication that you're, you all aren't doing enough. Because that's not at all where it's coming from. It's really coming from, we all want to help, we all want to support. And so we're willing to do what we need to do to, to help make that happen. So I appreciate the, you know, the spirit in which you receive those kinds of suggestions or, or comments. So thank you.
Well, thank you all. Thank you very much. There's nothing that needs to change.
I will say, yeah, I agree. I think HUMIRA said it, we're very lucky to have you. So I would have expected you to figure out this COVID thing by now. So I'm a little disappointed. There's, there's always tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Annie. Thanks a lot. And so I think that is the end of presentation and discussion. And I don't have the agenda right in front of me.
It is.
Great.
And we discussed the resolution already. So we'll move into school committee reports and discussion. And then right after that, we'll have announcements. I see Jane Deminsmith had her hand up. So we will make sure she gets an announcement up there. She's got one. So for school committee reports and discussion collaborative, HUMIRA, I believe you attended a meeting for them?
I did. I attended, I think it was a three-hour board meeting last Wednesday. And lots going on at the collaborative. They are putting together programs that our districts need right now. And I, I'm sure Annie, any other educators see that through their weekly mailings. I will forward to all of my colleagues on this call, the latest executive director's report, which is, has a lot of information. But one thing I wanted to point out, I wanted to make sure I reached out, I asked in the context of the board meeting about the SPIFI report. So many of you know CES works with a team that executes on our student health information. I think their query of students in our population is once every two years. But it goes back for many, many years. And it provides a really sound baseline for what kinds of numbers are normal year after year for different things. From smoking and tobacco uses and e-cigarettes to drinking at the various age levels to depression and anxiety and suicidal thoughts. And I thought, especially in light of the mental health issues that are being surfaced amongst our student population nationally and also locally, it would be really good to have that external entity conduct that review. And they were in real time able to call the people who do the analysis to, to say, yes, in fact, we are definitely doing it and we will be reaching out into schools in earnest this coming month. So I'm not sure if they were planning on doing it or not. Maybe they were like, oh, it's COVID, where there's no way we're going to get a hold of. But the fact that we say something, I think it always goes towards influencing what we need to happen. So I was just really, really pleased to hear that. So Annie, if you haven't already been contacted or the building principals, and we should definitely get on that as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, HUMIRA. We have been, Ms. Komiso and Nurse Master-Toro, because the, these data about risk assessment, we, every two years, they survey eighth, 10th and 12th grader. So they have already started setting that up at Hopkins Academy. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you, HUMIRA. Anything else from the collaborative? Oh, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
I was just, the timing on that. When does that, that happen? I was just, the timing on that. When does that, that happen? Annie, that, is that soon?
Yes, it will happen. Gosh, I wish I had the email in front of me, but it will happen soon. I want to say perhaps I'll survey them in March. We'll get it all organized in March, maybe sooner.
Thanks for sitting in a three hour meeting, Humira. Geez, just what you wanted, I'm sure.
My only regret was that I couldn't come to yours, Paul, but.
Oh, that's it. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Too many meetings.
Indeed.
So negotiations, I guess our update on that would be that we did meet last week. I think it was last week. Yes. And came, went into executive session and came back into open session to agree to the negotiations that we conducted with Unit A, which is the Hadley Educators Association teachers. So there are different units that we have for different personnel and roles. And so Unit A, we did agree in that open meeting vote to the terms that we had agreed to with them. And so I believe that it goes to their representation, right, for any approval process. So that's where we stand. And we look forward to meeting with Unit D, I believe, which is
We have, we, but we need to go into executive session before we can make any announcements about Unit B.
Got it.
We'll go into executive tonight and return to open afterwards.
All right. So we look forward to talking about that and then come back, coming back out and Unit D. Would somebody like to speak to just Unit D, who that population is?
I'm unmuted. I can. I'm happy to. Thank you, Paul and Ethan for participating in negotiations. Unit D represents the educational support professionals for the ESPs in the district. But we have negotiated and we look forward to speaking with the school committee in executive session tonight. And the school committee can then vote out and open afterwards.
Great. Thank you. And finance, any update on finance, tri-board, any of that, our budget update, Annie?
I do have a budget update. Sorry, Ethan, I don't mean to steal your thunder here. I just want to take the school committee through a couple of things very quickly. Last Monday, I presented to you a budget overview, indicated that the entire bottom line was decreasing in FY '22 by about $21,000. But to get to level service, that we would need about $53,000 or $53.6, we'll call it $54,000, which represents an increase of less than 1% to the request to the town for local contribution. And that was the town administrator and that was the town treasurer. Everybody on the town side is doing a great job. It was a wonderful meeting. And I will say, I'd like to bring another recommendation forward to the school committee. And that is, no bother. I thought I don't get to share a window. I'm trying to share something else. It's not happening. So I'm just going to explain it to you. I have beautiful graphs to show you, but I'll give up on that. What I'm recommending is that we simply have requested the town to fund the local contribution at FY '21 levels. And the reason that I'm requesting that or suggesting that is because the town, so if we were to do that, it doesn't mean that we would make any cuts to the proposed budget that we have for FY '22. We are receiving some money, we know of right now, some money that we're getting, some additional COVID money, about $21,000 of additional COVID money. But also the reason that I'm recommending this is that the town requested level funding from departments because one of the largest revenue streams in the town, which is meals and occupancy tax, is, those revenues are going to be probably quite low in fiscal year '21, this fiscal year. The last time we had a fully normal year in the town was fiscal year '19, right? Because in fiscal year '20, businesses were forced to close their, their doors and significantly reduce their services in the spring, last spring, which was fiscal year '20. So in fiscal year '19, the town collected about $841,000 in rooms tax, occupancy tax, and about $383,000 in meals tax. And right now in FY '21, we're about halfway through the year. They've collected about $216,000 in rooms tax and about $149,000 in meals tax. So you can see that we're halfway through the year and yet those revenue streams are much less than they've collected. They haven't collected half of the revenue stream from fiscal year '19. And I've pointed out to you before, and I'll make sure that I have visuals for you the next time we get a budget update. But the town is extremely generous with the schools. The town funds the schools well above required local contribution, significantly above required local contribution. Now, the schools as a percentage of total operating budget in the town in fiscal year '20, I want to say, is the most recent data we have for that. The school department is about 40% of the town's budget. In surrounding communities, that usually runs closer to, sometimes it's around 40%. North Hampton's around 40, 41%. Amherst is closer to 53%. Belchertown, in some of the, in some other communities in Hampshire County, the school department is a much larger percentage of the total operating budget. So we are certainly a reasonable percentage of the total operating budget, but that we should not, it, it, it's, I think, important to underscore how supportive the town is. And again, I'll make sure that it's easy for me to show some of these visuals the next time we talk about the budget. Because when you see the support that the town gives, it's a powerful image. So having said all that, I would like to make a different recommendation. And that is simply that the school department will request level funding for local contribution in the town. We are in a position to still make the budget, all those priorities I laid out for you last week. We can make that work. We can make it work with this additional COVID funding and by using additional school choice funds. So we can definitely make it work. And by doing that, it's my hope that other departments like public safety, that other departments who, if we don't do this, there's no chance they can get to level service. I'm hoping that they can get to level service. If the school committee has any reservations about that, it'd be important for me to know that. If you're on board with that, I will certainly, we'll change here tonight and I will make sure the town administrator knows that later this evening when the meeting is over.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. I think it was, you know, an amount that we, it seems like we have resources to be able to cover that amount. You did due diligence upfront of doing what was asked in terms of level service and looking at level funding, what we'd have to do to make up the difference. And so, I mean, based on also hearing about the support that we would be getting from COVID relief, you know, state, state support, federal support for this year, which we clearly are looking for initiatives around testing to be able to use those funds. It seems like this is a small part of something that we can do to, again, help the town.
I agree.
And that's it for, that's all I have for the budget and finance at this point.
All right. We do have one action item, approval of minutes. And then we'll do any announcements or updates. So we do have one set of minutes, the January 4th, 21 minutes.
I have a minor modification and that is the spelling of my last name under the approval of last, the last set of minutes, minor thing. But barring that, I motion to approve these minutes.
No, it's an important thing. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So we would like to just have a placeholder for any announcements or updates. I have one. And if there's anybody, town officials on the call that would like to also provide any kind of announcement or update, please raise your hand. I know often Jane Nevin Smith joins us or representatives from the Board of Health. So want to give them an opportunity to make any town announcements. And there is Jane Nevin Smith there. So I will actually let her take the floor, ask her to unmute. Jane, you should be able to talk now.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. I'm requesting that you all pay attention to seniors over 75 who are not computer literate. The only way they can sign up for a COVID shot is online. So if you have a neighbor or a family member or know of somebody, please try to get them help signing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. And I also, I appreciate, I think some postcards were sent out recently from the Council on Aging. And Governor Baker, I know, also announced that he acknowledged that, that barrier in terms of relying on online. And I understand he announced that there would be a hotline that would be starting up or it was something that seniors could call. And so I, I would look for more information on that. But it is, again, another example of things change every day, right? So if enough folks talk about the challenges with a particular group and access, that things may be able to change. But appreciate Jane, your comments and would encourage anyone to, yes, definitely help, help a neighbor, help that, you know, your friends and your family in this.
Yeah. And as things changed, last week, they told us there was no more vaccine. And today they announced there were 2,400 new doses starting today. So it changes.
Yep. It's what was in the fridge.
That's, that's Amherst, North Hampton and Hadley. So.
Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. I had one announcement and it's more of a kudos. And I see that we're going to talk about it at the end of February. I was hoping to. I would just like to thank, and, and I'm, I'm going to say one name just because I know that she personally has shown up at my door. Actually, I'll say two, because they both have shown up at my door with gifts for my senior in my family, my son, who feels very appreciated as, I see two other folks on this committee who could speak to this. But I'll just thank Christine Markowski and Allison Willett. And I know there are others and I want to hear about others who have supported recognizing our seniors. And just to give you an example, they showed up on the first day, the Sunday before the first day of school with balloons and a nice printed certificate. We've got some pictures of that that I think we've shared either on the Hopkins Academy page or elsewhere. They showed up this weekend with a hand painted Hopkins Academy mug with a hawk, golden hawk on it and hot chocolate and a beautiful poem with a countdown, kind of a, you know, new year countdown to graduation. And, you know, my son misses the senior class opportunities that all of us, you know, many of us had as high schoolers that all of, that we would want for our kids. And the, it's those little things that actually are really big things that I, I really appreciate and I know that he does as well. So I want to thank them and I'd like to, you know, have more of a formal opportunity to, to really talk about some of those things, celebrate those things, as well as the sixth grade, you know, moving into this seventh grade and some of the folks who have been part of those initiatives. So thank you.
I have a quick announcement, Heather, if there are none others, no other announcements. So just a quick reminder that February 4th, this Thursday, there's another Hadley Learns video podcast. You know, it's, it sounds odd to say book reading when there's no book. But, but if you go to hadleylearns.com, the topic of the month is ways to address inequity in the K-12 education system. And there's some great thinkers on this topic whose videos we have shared. So we welcome that you sign up. All you need to do is watch one of those videos and then compare, come prepared to have a small group discussion with other folks about what some of the issues are that were, that, that were discussed in those videos and what kinds of things might be right to explore in Hadley. So we urge everyone to attend. It's such a wonderfully welcoming group. And it's a great place to meet people and discuss these issues. So check that out.
Thanks, Humira. Just picking up on what you said, Heather, too. Just, I know Mary Tudran and Christine Phipchinsky have been involved too. I'm sure there's multiple others. But I also want to say, I know April Camuso, Principal Camuso, sent out an email talking about starting a plan for senior graduation. So I know there's some thinking out there. I think we had some lessons too from this last year, like the parade I thought was, was really well done this year. It'd be great to see that replicated. Hopefully, hopefully we can have some sort of close proximity, maybe I'm being too hopeful. But yeah, so I know there's already thinking out there. And I think April was looking for ideas that, so if others have ideas about how to make senior graduation, senior week successful. I think she, she'd asked for feedback.
Thanks, Paul. And thanks for mentioning Mary and Miss Tep around that. I really appreciate all of their efforts. All right. Any other announcements or updates for tonight? Shout outs? Okay. All right. We're, next meeting dates, we have lots of opportunities. February 8th, we have a special meeting for data review. 15th, we won't meet. And then the 22nd, we'll have our full meeting with business manager reports, Hopkins program of studies and celebrating our 12th and our sixth graders. So we do need a motion to adjourn our regular meeting and move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to reconvene, not to not
No, we do need to reconvene.
To reconvene in open session. Yes. Is there a motion for what I just said? Second. Do we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Paul?
Yep.
Humira?
Hi.
Ethan?
Yes.
Tara? Tara stepped away, I think, for a second.
Okay. I'll use this moment to say Corey Feltevick's also involved in the senior thing. So I do, I'll make sure I don't miss anybody.
Corey.
Thanks, Corey.
Keep him coming.
All right. And clash eye. So let's, oh, Tara got booted. She's coming back in.
She's in there.
She's in the waiting room. All right. We are now adjourning our regular meeting and moving to go into executive session. We will come back in, back into open session to vote. Thank you, everyone who has left.
I just assumed Tara was like, it's, I'm happy I don't have to be back on it.
She had cats.
Sorry about that.
Cats were going crazy the whole time.
And so now the law then requires that the school committee, you just voted in the executive session, agree to the contract terms that Unit D presented of a one-year contract with a 1.5% COLA increase. That is subject to HDA ratification. You would need to move that and second it in open session and do a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote. Paul?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Tara?
Hi, yes.
Humira?
Hi.
Heather? Hi. All right. It is approved. Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Great work, guys.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Good night, guys.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Great work.